I have six o'clock. Let's call a meeting order. We call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Here.
Trustee Lawler?
Here.
Trustee Leafblad?
Here.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katsinas?
Here.
Trustee Malani?
Here.
Mayor Dodge?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any non-scheduled citizens or visitors for agenda-specific public comment?
Sal? Come on, you, please identify yourself.
Sal Esmar, resident of Orland Park. I'm also leasing the property 9441, former KFC.
Okay.
So I got a call today from somebody here in the village. I forgot his name. I've been dealing with the building department for, it's been six months now. So they called me today. They said, we have somebody who's, we're gonna buy your property. So I'm just trying to figure out what's going on.
Okay, so, any other comments? Because we can, because, George, do you want to address this question? This is George, our village manager.
I forgot the name of the person who called me.
We got you. George is our village manager. So George, you want to take this?
So on the agenda today is, if the board goes through with it, is an approval to proceed with eminent domain for the former KFC and the former BP. Eminent domain is just one way that the village can acquire property. And, and so that's why they were giving you a heads up, that the village is looking to acquire this parcel. It will be, or in all likelihood, torn down, both properties, as part of a larger development.
So I don't own the building. I'm a tenant. I have a lease. It's an 18-year lease. So I have nothing to do with you tearing the building down, or with, I mean, I don't know.
So, you know what I'll do is, I will have our attorney, who's not here, let you know. He'll reach out to you. And it all depends on, you know, the next steps, but he can kind of let you know what, what, what happens with your lease and all of that.
Okay. And when will I get a call from somebody?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
So we just need, when you're done here, just come over here and give us your contact information.
I'll give you a card, too.
Yeah, George, we've got it.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Mr. Nugent, you didn't sign in, but happy to entertain your comments. Just come up, come up to the, they're on the post. But we'll allow you, identify yourself, please.
If it's not protocol, then I will sit down.
I'm sorry?
I didn't see you signing, so if it's not protocol.
Just go ahead.
I'm John Nugent. I live at 1506 South 81st Court. I got an email this morning from Mary LaConte that I wouldn't longer be in plan. I was coming for that. And I also came because I'm looking it up. I saw that the two items were on the agenda for tonight. As a resident, a taxpayer, and all my participations, I strongly against the village being a developer. Obviously, we had the project next door. And when that was before Plan Commission and before the village, there was a lot of discussion whether or not the BP property, the easement behind BP and KFC was needed for them. They said no. They had said in the way past, because obviously, that family has owned that property for 20 years, some of the parcels. They said they didn't need it. They were okay with it. I just don't think the village should be acquiring properties for development. There's more we're gonna learn about, but we learned plenty. And there was plain information, for those that don't know, about the land next door, and flooding, and water, and all that. I don't see how the village needs that. I'm opposed to it unless you guys can show us good reason. Again, it's more taxpayer money being spent. The two of them pay an immense amount of taxes. And it's gonna be even worse if someone's already signed an 18-year lease and looks to be compensated by the village for his inability to locate his coffee shop there. And on the Plan Commission part of it, I serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and you obviously no longer want me on it, and I understand that. I just want to be more on the record. I think I like a lot of people in the village. I'm very uniquely qualified and did a good job on it. I, for years and years, would go to all the flood meetings. Back to '05, '06, I would go to all those. I'd go to all the meetings for old Orland historic, and we spent all that effort, all that money for stuff there. I'm a huge architecture and history buff, so I follow stuff like that. I've lived in three different homes in the village, and each one of those has impact. I have a lot to contribute. I've been really good about that. And in the email from Mary, it said that we need to increase participation of all commissions and give new residents an opportunity to serve. It also said this was a difficult decision. The new residents are a former trustee who has served a long time, of all the people in the village. I'm not sure how that's a new voice. And someone who obviously was involved in the campaign for the five of you, one of you is not here. And that's fine. It's politics. And as John told me during the election, that's not who you guys are. When I met John at early voting, we had a lovely discussion. He and I both are very passionate, and John is very intelligent, has a lot to offer. I said, John, if you guys win, you're gonna remove me as one of the first things you do for Plan. He said, that's not who we are. That's not how we are, and that's not where we want to go, is reunify the village. John, I just hope you call that conversation. But the village is the one losing here. I'm a good guy. I'm not a sore loser. I understand elections. I understand who I supported in the mayoral election. But, you know, we got people on this commission that have been there 20 years. And if we wanted to create a spot for a new trustee, or for a former devotee of the mayor, the prior mayor, I'd get it. And to choose those spots, I was the last person put on that commission. And I was the voice of everybody, whether it was for the school additions, whatever. I didn't ever look at partisans or sides. I represented everybody. So I just wanted that to be out there, because I'm a good person. I'm a smart person. I was a good contributor to that board. I'm not being removed for incompetence, anything else like that. I'm being removed for politics.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Next item, please.
Advisory Board appointments.
There are motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas.
I would like to make a motion to separate the two individuals to vote twice for the appointments.
Second? So you want to make two motions?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for each individual, please.
There's a motion and a second, or any procedural issues?
What's the motion?
I would like to make a motion to appoint, or vote on the appointment of each individual separately. Right now, they're all in the same motion. The two, people are in the same motion.
There's no issue with that.
Alright. I don't know if we need a motion to formally do that. You can simply just.
I would just do that for the sake of clarity.
Okay. Call the roll on the motion, which is to separate the, the two nominations.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Is there a motion and a second for appointments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad.
I move to, I move to consent the appointment by President Dodge of Kathy Fenton to the Plan Commission.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani.
When I first saw this, my first knee-jerk reaction was like, no way am I voting for this. But then I thought about it, and I'm like, you know what? This is, this is, you're right. You're entitled to build these committees how you would like to. And, you know, it's your prerogative. So, you know, then I started thinking, I'm like, it's, it's kind of like the Blues Brothers getting the band back together. You know, you'll have some faces that you're familiar with. So, you know, hey, let's, let's go for it. We could probably bring back Dan McLaughlin. He can run the EDAB. We could bring back Mike Carroll. He could run the 9/11 board. And we'd have just about everybody here. So looking forward to seeing some friendly faces again.
Are there any other comments that perhaps are not as snarky from the board? Trustee Healy?
Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you what I think. I think that it's, I would hope that this person going on this board is not political, is, thinks about the good of Orland. And, you know, some people, so I, I just, I just wish whoever gets on there can vote for the good of Orland first and leave the politics behind.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas.
I would just like to thank everybody that's currently on the Planning Commission, and also you, John. Thank you for your service to the Village of Orland, and also Patrick Sampaurelli. We are very fortunate to have such a good Planning Commission. And these people provide service and go in-depth on issues without receiving any payment from the village. So not only you, John, and Patrick, but also the current members there. They provide a critical service to this board. And there has to be a trust factor in that information we're getting. So I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? There's a motion and a second to appoint Kathy Fenton to the Plan Commission. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to consent the appointments by President Dodge of Dave Shalavy to the Plan Commission.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad.
I think it is appropriate to thank the people who have served on the commission to, up until now, certainly. You know, sometimes change is hard, but it doesn't necessarily mean that somebody's input is not welcome, or, or had no significance during the time of service.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to make sure this is a motion to appoint them. So even though it's not unanimous, this is still, so it should be a motion for appointment rather than a motion to consent. So we have some clarity on that. So maybe we could rephrase that motion that was brought by, is that, Trustee Katsinas?
I move to consent the appointments by, it has consent within the motion. Is that acceptable?
It requires consent to a mayoral appointment.
I just wanted to make sure that, because there, there, typically on consent, everybody's in agreement, correct? And in this situation.
We've had four to threes before.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Ordinance for eminent domain of 9441 159th Street, the former KFC restaurant.
Is there a motion and a second, so we can have a discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing Acquisition of Property by Eminent Domain at 9441 159th Street." Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas.
Yeah, I too am strongly against even the threat of eminent domain on property owners. That was done in the past, and it didn't work out too good for the village. You know, I guess I don't understand the why. We've had blighted property across Orland Park that we're not pursuing, but we're pursuing these two parcels. My hope is, is that it's not tied into another development. So I have a real concern about this because just this threat of eminent domain affects property value. And we don't need it for a roadway. We don't need it for a park, sewer treatment, water, easements. Because it's empty, because it's vacant, because it's blighted, a lot of properties unfortunately in Orland would hold up to that standard, and we're not pursuing. I think it's outside the realm of government, and I feel bad for you, sir, that may be affected by it, and other property owners. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Mayor? Trustee Lawler?
George, can you tell me, these properties have been vacant for quite some time, right?
Yeah, the KFC, probably close to six years, the former, oh, no, I'm sorry, the former BP, close to six, and then the former KFC, probably close to five.
And are we continuing to write, you know, they maintain the properties?
Yeah, so especially on the former BP, the only way they're being maintained right now is the village is maintaining them. We're fining them, and then we have to lean the property because of just massive growth. They're, they're just not being maintained.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I would have thought that going to the property owner and asking them if they're amenable to a sale would have been step one, and avoid all the legal hoops we have to, well, not all, most, most of the legal hoops we have to jump through. So I'm kind of surprised when a young man comes in today and asks for, tells us, you know, it's a surprise to him. So I, maybe that, it might be that we're rushing this a little bit too much. It seems like this, you know, we, we talked about looking into it, but now we're all, we're all the way off to the eminent domain question. Yeah, I just think that we're rushing through it.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
You know, I know we were originally trying to purchase these, and, you know, it's been, you know, fairly slow. And, you know, here we are with the eminent domain. I don't think it's, maybe there's some other options we could entertain. I mean, taking this as a hammer and as a last resort, not entirely thrilled with the feeling of that. And since we have the tenant here tonight that owns an 18, that has an 18-year lease with the owner, seems that there's some unsolved issues here that probably need to be addressed. So I'm going to move to table this until the issues can be resolved.
There's a motion, there's a motion to table, which typically takes precedent. Is there a second to that motion?
I'm gonna second that.
Excuse me?
No, I don't think there's any debate on the motion.
Point of order for our attorney. Didn't we already have a motion?
There's a motion pending, but, so now there's a motion to table it.
Which takes precedence.
Which is going to take precedence.
Okay.
So if we table it, the conversation ends for this evening. If we don't table it, we can go forward and ask George Casparo why he's taking us down this pathway. So if we want to continue the conversation, vote no against this amendment. Call the roll, please, on the amendment to table.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler? Trustee.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
No.
Trustee Leafblad?
No.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
No. Motion's tabled, four to three, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Next item, please.
Ordinance for eminent domain of 9401 159th Street, former BP gas station.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad.
I'm sorry, I, I need to get to the page. I apologize. I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing Acquisition of Property by Eminent Domain at 9401 159th Street."
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Point of order, because I'm really confused. Because we just, we're on 9441. You just said the motion failed to table when we passed the motion to table.
No, I'm sorry, then, I think you misheard me. I said the motion passed to table. We're now on to the next item.
Thought you said the motion failed.
No, no, no.
Okay, I apologize.
No.
Sorry.
That motion to table succeeded.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a motion now for the same consideration on the BP property. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
It's a motion and a second to consider this item.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I motion to table this.
There's a motion to table this item?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Call the motion to table this item.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
No.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad?
No.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Uh, no. So that motion carries, meaning we are not discussing this item at this time. Okay, next item.
License, access, and indemnity agreement, downtown Orland Park, parcel H.
Is there a motion and a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Excuse me, Trustee Leafblad?
I move to approve and authorize the execution of a license, access, and indemnity agreement with E and R Development Corporation, and authorize the village manager to execute the agreement subject to village attorney review.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Can we just get a brief summary of the details on this?
So as part of the RDA with Edwards Realty, there is a procedure for, before what can happen, before they can develop a certain parcel. One of those steps requires the closing on the parcel. They're anxious to get going on the construction of the Weber Grill. So this, this, while the closing is all being finalized, this allows them to break ground and get working on Weber Grill.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure it's clear. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
George, how come, what's, what's the deal on, I mean, there's, I didn't read anything specific that's wrong. I mean, we go through a lot of contracts. This one seems to be an exception, that there's, so, what's the holdup, I guess is my.
No holdup. It's just the, the, the way that, the, the amount of time it's gonna take for the closing, and Weber Grill is anxious to start construction. That's all. It's just, there's a, a point of time between the, the closing and all that.
So Weber Grill's initiating.
Weber Grill is, wants to get working. And if, once this is approved, they actually break ground tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I was hoping in the next committee of the whole that a representative of Edwards could attend and just give us an update of where they're at with the triangle.
I'll think about it. Okay, there any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad?
Based on the contract with, the development contract, doesn't each parcel close individually?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the first parcel. We're actually finally at the point of not only breaking ground, but closing. And the, the business, Weber Grill, that's going to occupy it, is so enthusiastic that they're willing to break ground prior to close. So all we're doing is giving them freedom to do that, so that they don't have to wait for this property to close.
Correct.
Per the contract.
Per the RDA, correct.
Per the RDA that was signed before.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Employee health insurance renewal, FY 2026.
George, before we get to any motions, because there's presented options, we should, let's talk this through. Make sure everybody understands what we're doing and why we're doing it. How do you want to handle the presentation?
So we have representatives from IPBC, and we have representatives from MMA. I believe that the lineup is IPBC first. So we have Dave Cook here, from, he's the director of the Intergovernmental Benefit Purchasing Cooperative, right? Is that what it is?
Intergovernmental Personnel Benefit Cooperative.
There you go.
Whoever named that in 1979 should have been, that's why we say IPBC. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. There we go, thank you. Just to give you a brief introduction of myself, as George said, I'm Dave Cook. I'm the executive director of the IPBC, and have been since 2013, and the first and only executive director. Prior to that, I served 30 years in local government, the last 23 at the village of Hensdale. Retired in 2013 as the village manager, and at that time, took the part-time position as the executive director of the IPBC when we had 68 members. As you can see on the board today, we have had significant growth over the last 12 years. As of November 1st, we had 175 members across the state of Illinois. Roll forward to January 1, this slide was done on Friday. Since then, I've had several more conversations. We will be admitting on Thursday 10 new members to the IPBC, and hopefully, you will be the 11th. Some of those communities, they're across the state, but some of the notable ones here, I'm sure you would be aware of, Gurnee, Oakbrook, Vernon Hills. In downstate, we have Jersey County, Highland. We have a couple park districts joining, so we are really, have, have really increased our participation and membership. And I can tell you that what is going on in the health industry right now with the rates, I am seeing a great deal of interest. And I, I know as the 1-1 renewals come out in the next few weeks, my phone and my email is gonna be ringing awful hot. What is different about the IPBC is really important. And if you can't tell, let me back up one thing. One thing I forgot to mention about Hensdale, and why I mentioned that, because Hensdale was one of the earliest members of the IPBC, going back to 1984. I came in 1990. So since the last 35 years, I have been involved in the IPBC in one manner or another, as a delegate, as the manager, then became an executive. I am actually the producer of record for the IPBC. I have my health license producer permit. So it's, it's a unique organization. Every bit of our, our powers, our authority comes directly from the Illinois Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. If you look at Section 6, joint insurance pools, whether they be property casualty pools, or they be health pools like we are, the powers all come from there. As such, we are open to any union of local government, which basically is anything other than state government. When you join the IPBC, it's technically a one-year rolling renewal. It automatically renews, but every year, if you decide to leave with 90 days' notice prior to our, beginning of our fiscal year, you can decide to leave. You would have your firm rates prior to that date to make a decision. Whether you're a July 1, we have, I should stick up, we have two open enrollment periods, either a July 1 or a calendar year 1-1. Either or, rates are locked in March. So as you are a calendar year, you would have notice of your rates for the next year for nine months preceding. How we can do that, because we have over, well, it will. It will be over twenty-four thousand employees on January one. We are very creditable, the way... And we'll talk about how we pool the risk, which provides more protection for you than you currently have. One of the big distinctions, the members own and operate the cooperative. I can sit and give any guidance I want to, any recommendations, but the members actually vote. We have unique relationships with our vendors. We basically rent the Blue Cross network and the United Healthcare Network and the Delta Dental Network. They don't really have a lot of power over us, other than we pay them an admin fee and they send us an invoice for the clients. As a member of the IPBC, you would have a seat on our Board of Directors. We call ourselves a membership agency that provides health benefits. We do not think of ourselves as a insurance broker. That is a huge distinction. You will be joining many other local government representatives across the state in building what we believe is a better model for health insurance for today and the future. During the year, we have elected an executive board of fifteen members. They're all elected by category of sizes. We would really encourage your participation in the executive board or one of our committees. We have three standing committees, Finance, Operations, and Membership Development. All of those also have fifteen-member boards. So, at any time in the year, there are a minimum of sixteen members in the IPBC who are actively involved in the governance, and that makes a huge difference. I went the wrong way. The IPBC advantage, first and foremost, at the top of the scale, if there was not financial stability and predictability, there would not be an IPBC simply. We believe very strongly in access to data, full disclosure, and transparency. I don't care if you're our smallest member in the village of Trenton, far southern Illinois, ten members, or my largest member, Lake County, at twenty-eight hundred members. We treat you the same. We give you the same access to the data. You're gonna see your monthly claim data. You're gonna be a part of it. Not only you'll see your data, you'll get to see the data of everyone else in the pool because... And why? Because we share risks, and we all participate in it. Flexibility and plan design, we have with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have a great deal of flexibility. The same with Express Scripts. We carve out our PBM. The benefits of pooling aren't significant. I'll just point out a couple here real quick. If you notice in the quote, your life rates are going down, I believe, forty percent. That's because when we go out to bid, we get the best prices. We go out for life insurance, we get a price of seven cents per thousand. It's just the way the market works. It's not a lot different... I say this a lot to people who look at me, but it's not a lot different than buying rock salt off the state bid. There is group purchasing is just as important in insurance as it is in anything else. As I mentioned, we carve out our prescription drugs. One of the... I'm gonna be very honest with you. We have a very direct contract with Express Scripts for prescription drugs. We believe very strongly in having a fiduciary responsibility to our members. Every one of our vendors, irrespective, is RFP'd at least every five years for, one, the best price and to ensure we're getting the best service that we can get. We just went out for an RFP last year for prescription drugs. All the big players, CVS, Optum Prime, which is tied to Blue Cross. We have been with Express Scripts for many years. We stayed with Express Scripts. We got a thirty-two percent discount, seventy-eight million dollars over three years we saved by going out to market. That's what the power of group purchasing does for you. Our staff and service team, all we do is local government work. We know all the nuances of local government. We understand placebo for your police and firefighters. We do it every day. We know how to talk, the annual conference of financial reports. We know the obligations your retirees have when they retire and what rights they have to stay on plans. Those are all the things that make us unique. And then, at the end of the year, in most years, there's dividends, and they go back to our members. This is... I always want to note that I updated these slides a few hours ago once we received the... I received the revised quote from MMA. Thank you to the staff for being so gracious to me and providing the data in a timely manner. But I just want to give you a snapshot upfront of... And I'm gonna talk about the long-term aspect of the IPBC in a second, but this is what year one means for you. Coming into the IPBC, you can see the bottom line, and there is a net savings of a little over four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in year one. Six point five percent savings over your renewal premiums with the... Our funding arrangement. Now, this is here again. I'm gonna point out two things in here that I think are very important. One thing, you're gonna lower your risk. Currently, your ISL, your stop-loss is a hundred thousand. One of your proposals is to raise that to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. At the IPBC, that number is lowered to fifty thousand. That is the number that any member in the IPBC is responsible for on their own. Once a claim becomes hit fifty thousand dollars, up to two million dollars, that claim is spread across the IPBC on a per-premium basis. Also, one of the unique things about the IPBC, because we have over two hundred million in the bank, that layer is self-financed by the IPBC. That is a huge savings to our members. If you look in some of the information that was provided for me, a lot of the rate increase is coming from your increase in your stop-loss, and that has been happening for years. And that's why a lot of members in the last few years have come to us who've been independent on their own. Once a claim does hit two million dollars, we do buy commercial stop-loss, you know, to protect ourselves for high catastrophic claims. Our five-year average on our PPO site is four point eight percent. You will see this year, the eleven point one percent increase, our largest we ever had since twenty-ten. I can tell you that four percent of that was tied to weight loss GLP-1 drugs. The vast majority of our members do cover them. I know you don't currently, and that's something you'll be able to... You'll have an option whether you want to or not going forward. But that alone added over ten million dollars to our claim expense. The number of users quadrupled in one... In a twelve-month period. On the HMO side, even a better five-year average, a two point six. As I mentioned, dividends over the last five years, we returned one point three percent on the PPO side and five point two percent on the HMO side. If anything, you look at... This is a slide that I tell people, you know, going through every renewal every year, sort of like Groundhog Day, you do the same thing. You try to find things. You need to change your mode of operation. The IPBC is a long-term investment. As I said, you know, we have seen exponential growth over the last few years. But the members... IPBC was formed by eight members back in nineteen seventy-nine. Six of them are still with us today. When members join, rarely do they leave. Why? Because this is the... The whole thing you need to do, and I thank you, I thank staff for providing me the information that come up with your five-year trend at eight point five eight versus the IPBC, when I took your blended trend between your HMO and the PPO, it came up to be a four point one percent. That's a four point four eight percent difference. And on top of that, our dividend's about two point four nine. So, it's simple math. When you look ahead and, you know, those averages, obviously, it's an assumption, but that's history. If you move them forward, you're gonna see every year, your savings will get better and better and better. And if you look at your past history, you've seen spikes. You've had good years, and you've had some really bad years. The way we pool really keeps those rate increases in a narrow band. And one of the things we also do for our members, every member is... Does get their own renewal, which is interesting in a pool our size, but we do that. But we also place caps. We... First thing we do is figure the IPBC average. From there, the best a member can get in any year is plus or minus five percent. So, if... It would just make this easy math. If the IPBC overall average is a five percent, the best a member can get is a zero, the worst they're gonna get is a ten percent. It really protects you moving forward. Additional savings included in our premiums are some things that normally aren't. We provide a free complimentary EAP program, which includes a dedicated first responder program for your first responders, fire, police, public works. We provide a complimentary enrollment eligibility platform that can be used for open enrollment. We believe strongly in wellness. We will reimburse the village up to a hundred and thirty-five dollars for annual health screenings, plus a flu shot. And then, on top of that, based upon your participation, the village can get back a hundred to four hundred dollars per employee. One of the other unique things about the IPBC is the minute the premiums hit our bank account, they are fully invested. We are returning... For the year that just ended, June thirtieth, we are returning fourteen point eight million dollars in investment earnings to our members, based upon your percentage deposits on hand. So, that's something, you know, in addition, you're gonna see on top of the dividends. Just real quick, our benefit providers are top-notch. Medical, Blue Cross, United Healthcare, Express Scripts is our PBM provider, ComSciC is our EAP provider, Delta Dental, obviously dental. Securing Life, they provide a lot of products for us, basic, a lot of supplementary voluntary programs. In addition, they do critical illness, accident, insurance, hospital indemnity. VSP is our vision provider. WEX, I call our all other provider, FSAs, HSAs, HRAs, lifestyle housing, commuter parking, any... Anything that's needed. And then, PlanSource is our opening... Excuse me, our enrollment eligibility provider. Our service partners, like I mentioned, the thing I, you know, I mentioned, they are all top-tier. One I want to pick out in particular is Milliman, who does our underwriting. We did an RFP four or five years ago now to all the big firms. Every one of them responded. We applied about with the Milliman book of health insurance business. We went straight to them. They do a fantastic job. They give us great advice. They prepare our renewals. They prepare the rates for new members. And I'm gonna tell you, they are conservative. We do not, I'm gonna be honest, we do not buy business. We don't negotiate business. We take their word for what they produce. And I think you saw the quote, and it's professionally done. And there again, I just mentioned that, you know, I can say, every one of these vendors, at least once every five years, is RFP'd. Our service team, most of our team, I know the person who will be assigned to you is one of our senior benefit consultants. They will be here to handle everything you need, open enrollment materials, guidance, problem-solving with carriers, review of your benefit strategies, making employer obligations, plan designs, cost implications, assistance with the wellness program, and we believe very strongly in benchmarking. About seventy percent of our members work through a voluntary benchmarking program at the IPBC, where you can benchmark yourself against others in the pool, your same size, outside of the government, the public as a whole, so you can see how you fit outside there. Then, the other thing we do, we believe very strongly in member training. We have a policy that at least once a quarter, we have member training, usually it's once a month, that can vary from compliance issues like HIPAA to everything, retiree obligations to placebo, you name it. We're gonna train our members to know what's out there in facing the world and what the issues are at hand. With that, I will... You can see our shining faces, myself and my two senior staff, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
There any questions from the board for IPBC?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad?
So, with regard to doctors, that... With regard to physicians, like doctors, so when, you know, when you switch over from one thing to another, people worry about, will they... How... Do physicians... Are there a lot... Do physicians usually cross over well?
The IPBC, our relation with the Blue Cross, we use their largest PPO network and the same HMO network that you're current... I mean, those networks are contracted by Blue Cross. They're no different. What you currently have today is what you'll have tomorrow with the IPBC. Exactly the same.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee.
A couple of questions. You talked about retention rate of the members. I think I didn't quite hear. Could you elaborate or repeat?
Since I have... I can go back to when I became... Like I said, we've grown from sixty-eight to one-seventy-five over the last twelve years. I can count seven members who have left.
And all the others are still with you, year after year after year?
Yeah.
Okay. Another question, member training details, could you give me a little bit? What does member training encompass? Is it the staff here, or is it the individual employees and their dependents?
The training is designed for staff.
Okay.
You know, all the things that Regina deals with, with compliance, with talking, knowing the options that retirees have, you know, for their plans moving forward, Medicare-type things. But on the other side of the coin, the... Your service web will be here to obviously walk you through open enrollment, to talk about the different plans, to help you, help to make educated decisions. So, it goes both ways, yes.
Okay. Another question. I was looking at the two graphs that compared the change in cost in medical insurance since increase starting in twenty-ten. And I looked at them, and it looks like that for the PPO and the HMO, that from twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty-five, for the medical trend, those numbers are exactly the same. Is that purposeful? The yearly numbers are the same for both the PPO and the HMO?
They shouldn't... I got them up there.
The first few years are different, so twenty-ten through twenty-fourteen are different for the medical trend, but there...
You're trying to put the green line on top?
The green line on the HMO and the blue line?
Yeah, that's medical... That is overall medical trend, which is the same across the board. The brown line is the IPBC renewal.
Correct. I'm sorry. The difference between the HMO and the PPO. So, there's two slides here I'm looking at, and on the PPO slide, I compare it to the HMO slide. And on the PPO slide, the blue line... So, go back one slide. So, the blue line on the PPO renewal and the green line on the HMO renewal have the same values for the year-over-year increases starting in twenty-fifteen.
Yeah. Our underwriters use a combined trend for both.
For those years?
Yeah.
Okay. And what is the source of that data? The trends, the medical trends?
Since the last four years would be Milliman, our underwriters, they determined the trend.
Okay. And for the earlier years?
Prior to that, it would have been... We used Gallagher as our underwriter, so Gallagher would have produced those numbers.
Okay. So, they're professional firms who specialize in that?
Yes.
Okay. So, I know when I do the math and calculate the trend over those years, I know that, just as an example, for the PPO, the medical trend was if you had one dollar of a medical cost in twenty-oh-nine, and you compared it to what happens over year-over-year, multiply each year by the next, that your net result is you're at three dollars and forty-one cents. When I look at the IPBC trend, it's one dollar and eighty-eight cents. So, effectively double, and if we had been with IPBC back then, we might have actually seen a lot of savings, not just what we might predict for twenty-twenty-six. And, of course, we can't predict the future.
Yep.
But this is a very interesting trend. There's a significant difference year after year after year after year.
And that's why members stay.
That does make sense.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas? Trustee Casinas?
I just had a question with the 4 percent increase, but you said last year it was 11, correct, because of the weight loss drug?
For those who renewed on either 7/125 or renewing on 1/1 of 26, the average PPO rate was 11.1 and the HMO is 6.2.
Okay. Do you see that number staying that? I guess because I see the 4 percent on the five-year, and that's a significant difference from 4 percent. And if you're so confident that it's 4 percent, could there be a cap written into our contract?
The way that IPBC, well, let me back up one bit. Do I, I'm going to be very honest with you, do I see these 4.8 and 2.6 rates staying? No. If you look at medical trend, and every expert in the book will tell you that it's going to stay low teens or higher for the next three to four years. What I will tell you, that our trend is, has been and will be consistently three to four points lower than market trend.
But you don't think it'll be 4 percent, like the graph shows with the figures?
I, you know...
I mean, there's no way to predict the future, I understand that. But those numbers are kind of skewed then, in my opinion, if you're saying four years and you're taking it down to 2030.
Well, if you compare the 11.1 for us versus what your renewal is in the 14 to 16, it's three to four points better.
And then in your Tier Four grouping, which we would be, how much do you estimate the cost per employee as a whole? I mean, do you ever break it down? I don't know, I didn't see that figure to try to give us a good idea.
It's, I apologize, I don't have the quote with me in front of me. It's in the quote, but I can get that for you.
Yeah. Just be curious to see how it matches against what we have now. You know, to see that. And then the dividends, has that been pretty consistent? I mean, how long have you been giving out dividends? For a while?
In my 35 years, I can remember two years when there were not dividends.
Now, sometimes people think about a pool. I was involved with one before with Gallagher and the fire service. So the bigger players sometimes have a greater risk because the smaller people want to get in there to kind of benefit from the bigger players' claim history or lack of. You know, there's a protection period. What would you say to us, as a Tier Four person, that what do we have to gain? The cost savings per year?
There are several things. One, how we handle, there's actually, Orland Park would be actually a Tier Three member, under three new lives. How we handle the risk for our small members, Tier One and Tier Two, which are lives under 150 lives. Tier One is 1 to 50, and then Tier Two is 51 to 150. They actually act as a subpool within the pool. They act as one member. Their claims are consolidated. So, and I'll be honest, their premiums on a, you know, PEPM basis are normally higher than a larger member.
Right. I had experience with that, that's why I was concerned.
And that's how you keep it fair and equitable.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Chairman? Trustee Maloney?
As far as the dental, it looks like you're moving from our current plan to Delta Dental. Coverage stays pretty much the same with that, because dental isn't that great to begin with.
Yep. What, there again, going back to the flexibility we have with Delta Dental and all your plans, we can, right, import your plans 100 percent as they are today. No question about it. Unless you want to make changes, we can make changes.
And then, you know, the BCBS, which I think is IMED, I think, for Blue Cross Blue Shield, right, and VSP, I think you might actually get a little bit better benefit out of VSP, but not much. So I mean, those are pretty much a wash.
Yep.
And it does look like there's a little bit of savings by going even with the dental and those as well, because I have here, you say your monthly silver PPO is about $1,270 per employee, I think. Because Trustee Casinas was asking about the quote, and I happened to find it here, and it looks like it's about $1,270 for the PPO.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah.
Should have brought it up. Sorry.
No, I mean, it's, you know, I see the savings here. I guess the one question also I have is the stop-loss insurance. You mentioned that anything over $2 million stop-loss would have to be purchased. Would we have to purchase the stop-loss?
No. Everything, everything we buy is, every contract we sign, every purchase we have is made by the IPBC on behalf of all members. Our stop-loss, commercial stop-loss contract, because of Sun Life of Canada, that covers its four catastrophic losses.
Okay. Because that was my biggest confusion there, was like, what do we do with that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
Another question, please. On Slide four, I see a number, net savings, $493,000 approximately. Is that correct? That's an updated number, you said?
Yep. Those numbers, I received this morning, the revised MMA report. I remember it was about $20,000 less than the one that was in version that was in Over the Packet.
Okay. So in that regard, I understand we have about approximately 300 active members that would fall under this policy. And a quick calculation of that number, $493,756, divided by the approximately 300 active members or users of the insurance, looks like we would be saving an order of a little over $1,600 a year per person covered in the plan. Sounds like a lot of money to me.
Doing the math in my head, it sounds pretty close.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one more question. Are your administrative fees built into everything?
Let me, that point I should have brought up. Obviously, there's expenses of the fund. In the medical rates, there is an admin fee. Our admin fee is under 1.5 percent. All our other products, there are no commissions added to any products. They are provided to our members at our cost. And that's why a lot, in most cases, our dental programs, our life programs, our vision programs, which are all group policies, not individual policies. And I can tell you, four years ago, when we added vision coverage across the board, most of our members ported their exact same plan, say 15 to 20 percent, just because of the administrative lessening from VSP.
Yep. And then that 1.5 percent, 1.5 percent of the cost of it?
Yes.
Okay. So roughly, what would you say Orland would pay?
Including the premiums?
No, just for the admin fee.
It would be 1.5 percent of the roughly, what is that number? Yeah. So, need a calculator. Sorry.
It's about $90,000, roughly, 90 to 100,000. Yeah, 97.5. Okay. You know, with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, I thought, doesn't matter who the vendor is, they're going to still quote that group? Is that correct? Do they give you a different pricing than they might give another broker?
They do not quote. We have the ability. Milliman sets our rates, based upon our claim history, based upon our fees, everything we do. And it's just a, like I said, our relation with Blue Cross Blue Shield is we rent their network. That's, employees get a Blue Cross card, but that's our relationship with them.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Trustee Healy?
So if, when we have a good experience, we would have, our premiums would be higher than our claims. Do we share that with the other municipalities?
Okay. There are roughly, a group here size, 65 percent of your renewal premiums is going to, your claims are going to determine, you know, your renewal. The other admin fees, you know, the banding fees, about 25 percent of that $50,000 up to whatever that is, excuse me, that accounts for about 25 percent of the IPBC's total expenses. So depending, and like I said, when you have a surplus, when Orland Park has a surplus, it goes into your reserve account, your dedicated reserve account. If you look at our audit, our audit is 170 pages. Why? Because we take every penny down to each individual member, and you will see it, it's public information, and that's just the way it works.
But part of it's shared with, to cover the overall?
Only the portion of the claims over $50,000.
Okay.
That is pooled. The claims under $50,000 are your responsibility, and if you have a good year under the claims, you're going to have a, you're going to have a good surplus.
Right. I looked at the annual report and way back in the back statistical section, it had, were these, just allocated claims or whatever, and it's total zero, but it's just a transfer between different villages and all that. So if we have a healthy group here, and it's, it would seem like it's, I mean, a younger group, I think we would have a better experience, but that's hard to tell. I'd just like to just point out two other macro problems. To me, when I look at the macroeconomics of it, is one is that the rates of return on the investments have never been, I mean, we're in a 20-year cycle here of just, of this market running forward and all that. And I hope it goes on forever, but I just, the rates of return on the investments, it's, there will be down years or whatever, and it could be a struggle to achieve profitability, not only here, but in a lot of areas. The other thing that I see is the state of Illinois is having financial difficulties. That would be a very big understatement. And I would say within, you know, within the next, pick a number of years, four years, eight years, 10 years, there could be financial difficulties for the states, which flow down to the counties, which flow down to the cities. I picture us as a stronger, well, the last I looked, we had a stronger financial capability. The, it's, I just worry that these other cities won't survive any hiccup when the bill comes due for the state of Illinois, and they can't fund a lot of, a lot of, you know, won't be good on their debts. I hope we can survive, but if we have to rely on a lot of these other places, it could be a bigger problem. I mean, when we cover, when we stand alone, we take care of our own business and all that, and I'm, I just, that's one of my worries, is being in a partnership with all these other suburbs. Do you have a credit rating for, I mean, is there's no, to get in? I mean, you know, if I had a poor credit rating, I couldn't, my suburb couldn't get in there.
Yeah. We, one of our requirements is that any industry joining the IPBC has to have a minimum of an A rating. We don't, we don't go to places, and I'll be honest with you, we are very careful. I will tell you that there was a large county downstate that we declined to quote because their claims were significantly high, especially in the high banded area, that if we would have brought them in, it would have cost the existing members over $500,000.
Yeah. It's a tough deal for everybody, so, yeah.
Yeah.
But thank you for your insights.
Any other questions from the board?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I have just one quick question about the legality. What if a member has a member ever, because of how something turned out, got into any issue and threatened any legal action? How does the fund handle that?
Well, not for, I mean, that's the way, I think you're, you know, we obviously are, you know, very professionally managed to run. We have directors and officers liability insurance. We have errors and omissions insurance. We have all those policies that, you know, that a normal broker insurance company would have to cover any type of issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
One more question. So let's just say we decide to go with IPBC, and at some point, we decide it's not working out for us, and we give you proper notice and cancel. How are those outstanding claims covered, processed? Is there any risk at the, you know, at a transition point?
I should have mentioned that our rates are full incurred but not reported rates, that which means we are not just going to, the first year is, you know, your first year in the new pool is always immature because claims lag. We don't, we don't, we don't quote that way. We quote on a full accrual basis. So if you decide to leave, say, five years from now, you will have those funds build up to pay the runout claims for the 12-month required period that Blue Cross has. As I mentioned, we've had, like I said, seven members leave in the last 12 years. In every case, they had more than sufficient money to cover the runout claims and receive the excess funds once the runout period was completed.
Mr. Mayor? Trustee Healy?
So for five years, you leave it open in case claims come through?
No.
Or, no?
12 months.
Pardon me?
12-month runout period.
I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
12-month runout period.
Oh, 12-month. So for after the next year, you'll get, so if somebody leaves on December 31st, they've got to the next December 31st, you measure the claims coming in and bill for, but if there's a longer claim that goes beyond that?
That's someone else's issue, not ours. Very rarely, I mean, you know, even large claims, if they're over a year.
They're in the larger, yeah.
You're usually negative claims, repayments, but we've never had an issue. The agreement we have with Blue Cross is, our contract says it's a 12-month runout period.
Okay. Thank you.
One more time before I have my questions. Any other questions from the board? All right. Couple of questions. So if we select you tonight, Blue Cross Blue Shield is essentially the healthcare, I won't say provider, but administrator, correct? I want to use the right phrase.
They are the medical provider.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's through Blue Cross and their network of doctors that our employees will be served by their physician, so should be no disruption, correct?
Absolutely correct.
And then, how do we measure success going forward of how well our employees are served? I don't know if that's a question for you, or for Regina, or for George, but, you know, if we make this switch, we don't want to put that burden on our staff.
And I, believe you me, I'm a firm believer that the buck stops with me. I will guarantee you, and if something doesn't, and if something arises, I will take care of it. I insist on great service from our staff. We train them well, we pay them well, and they, like I said, are trained to provide good service, and not just for our, and that carries forward to all our vendors. We insist on that.
Then I guess then for George or for Regina, you'll get the first complaints if there's a service disruption.
And I think both of these gentlemen to my right have been former IPBC members. They can attest to our service.
That's correct. Regina is going to be the first line of defense here, and she'll know if there is something going wrong. And then, you know, if we go to IPBC, then she communicates with Dave. In a previous organization, both of us have been with IPBC. I was part of a transition similar to what would occur now. It was seamless.
Okay. And I guess then, just broadly about insurance market, as I understand it, so you're showing a $476,000 savings versus current state or what we might hear from another, from another offer? That seems pretty straightforward. So we're basically saying identical coverage, but with different potential providers, Delta for dental versus somebody else, but Blue Cross for the core insurance, you know, whatnot. It's $476,000. Do I understand that right, that that's what you're saying the savings would be? Okay? And then, there is, you know, there's a lower stop-loss with your proposal than with the... And then, there is, you know, there's a lower stop loss with your proposal than with the competitive proposal, correct?
Yep. Internal stop loss is 50,000, the IPC, your current stop loss is 100. The alternate proposal from MMA is to raise it to 125.
Okay. And then, just, it seems to me the main mechanism here for the savings is we would be entering a larger pool. Right now, we're self-insured, so it's all on us. And we haven't had good years, so despite the direction that Trustee Healy was going, we've had bad years and bad claims, which is one of the reasons why, as a self-insured small entity, we're facing some of these increases, correct? That's the main mechanism? It's the pooling?
Um, yeah, there, there are many ways that we save, like I mentioned some, you know, that, I'll be honest, our, our admin fee is less than what you're going to be paying in broker fees. Our, the amount of money we save by self-financing our, our own internal stop loss to 2 million. Our contract with Express Scripts probably is, our Milment estimates that versus what Prime has with Blue Cross, is about a 4% savings. There are programs we have within, within Express Scripts, like, you're all aware of, like, manufacturer coupon programs on T C L these days. Well, you know, that's nice, but most of these allowances are $10,000 for these drugs. But, you know, if you're, you know, if you're on, on a self-manufactured program, all they do is pay the copay for the individual. What happens to the balance of that money? They don't pay it. But with our program, with, you know, with the IPC, with Save On, what's called Save On SP, say it's a $10,000 co- maximum copay they're going to reimburse you for, four times a year, maybe a copay is $100 on some of these drugs, so it's like 400. So there's $9,600 left over. Now, obviously, Express Scripts is going to take an admin fee, they take a 25% admin fee, but the balance of that money comes back to the IPC. Last year, that was $7 million of savings just from that program alone. Those are just some of the types of programs where we save money and pass it on to our members.
Okay. And then, just to pivot off the question, I'm going to create a hypothetical here. You go into a pool, the good news is you're insuring 20, you know, the risk pool is across 20,000 people versus 300.
Yep.
And so the good news is that spreads risk, it's priced lower, scale, all those good functions. To pivot off of Trustee Healy's questions, if there are other entities in the cooperative that have adverse years, and it starts to impact us, my maximum length of time to stick with you is a year.
Yep.
Because we could leave the co-op.
Correct.
So if it does become a problem for us, and we could find savings elsewhere, quite frankly, it's thank you, we're moving on, correct?
Exactly correct.
Okay. All right. What I'd like to do now, we've asked and answered a lot of questions for IPC. George, I'd like to give Ford a, you know, same amount of time for the folks from MMA to have the same kind of, thank you.
So I'd like to introduce Bobby Dufkus.
Quick, uh, quick question. Do we want to take a quick five-minute break, so we can stand up and move a little bit? Anybody object to a quick five-minute recess? Is there a motion?
Motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Trustee Katzinas.
Trustee Laughton.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge. Trustee Lawrence.
Here.
Trustee Lawler.
Here.
Trustee Leafblad.
Here.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katzinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Mayor Dodge.
Here. All right, we'll continue with this item. George?
I'd like to introduce Bobby Dufkus from MMA. The board may recall, we, we had a broker agreement with Horton. It runs through next year, and MMA, last August, acquired Horton. So Bobby is our new rep here. So Bobby?
I have my colleague here, Mary Ann Miletto. She'll be joining me in like two minutes, but.
Probably got to raise that microphone, Bobby. You're taller than most, yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
No, we can't.
All right, now you can, okay. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Bobby Dufkus. I'm the public sector practice leader for Marsh McLennan Agency in Chicago, and I oversee the employee benefits divisions, as well as the property casualty workers compensation. Our practice is made up of municipalities, counties, public school districts, townships, mass transit districts, library districts, every taxing body in the state of Illinois, which are a lot, we have in our clientele. Most of our clients are in the Chicagoland area, and most, again, most of them are municipalities. And we did purchase Horton about a year and a half ago, and my team took the account from, or Village of Orland Park over, so my team is now handling it. We have about eight people on my team, and Mary Ann is the lead on our team, and she's going to be talking to you about the specifics of the program. I want to say thank you for George, Jim, and Regina. They've been absolutely great to work with, and giving us a lot of information over the last month or so. So what we want to do today is provide you your renewal on a standalone basis, and compare it to what IPC is offering, and talk to you about our service platform and so forth. Oh, and, I'm sorry. And then, in talking with Regina, she wanted us to kind of skinny down our presentation to just the numbers and what that looks like.
There we go. So good evening, thank you for having us. I am going to go through quickly, let's see, am I going the right way? There we go. Just the ancillary renewal, your medical renewal, the overview and the projection, and then a little bit on open enrollment. You probably don't care about that, but Regina does. So I know you had our renewal package, it was really big, I don't want to put you off to sleep. So this has been a long meeting. So your vision renewal, there's no change in rate or plan design, so that's great. The life, the voluntary life disability renewal as well, you're, it's a zero increase, no change in plan design, that would mean no disruption as well for employees. The dental renewal, your administrative fee that Blue Cross charges you is remaining the same. One of the things that's going up is the claim cost, and it's going up about 0.26%. So there is an increase there. The claim cost was 91.51 for 2025, predicted to be 91.76. The reason we're calling for a shortfall of 9% in the dental is it doesn't look like the rates were increased last year when there was a bigger claim increase. So it's not that you ran poorly this year, it's the rates weren't increased enough in 2025. So that's the good news. The revised medical renewal, it was a great lead-in from Dave. We are saying the same thing. This is Mercer information. We're seeing medical trend at about 6.5%. Pharmacy is where a lot of the cost is going up. So the average overall increases that we have seen for this year, our public sector groups is 16%, and private sector is 17%, and there's reasons for that. There's advances in treatments, they're becoming more expensive. We're seeing overall utilization increase to, you know, when the pandemic hit, everything shut down, everything is now catching up. New high-cost drugs are coming to the market. I don't think we're going to see that slow down. An unprecedented number of high-cost claimants on our entire book of business is what we're seeing, specifically a lot of cancers over this past year. And then, as Dave mentioned as well, we're in agreement. You don't have the GLP-1s for weight loss, and that's a good thing, because all our clients that have them are having the high teens to low 20, and they're larger, they're even larger than the Village of Orland. So with that being said, we did a lot of work to get your renewal down, however, you are standalone, so we don't have that purchasing power on your behalf in totality. I like to say you have to think of it as like Costco. You're buying in bulk, you know, sometimes not quality, but quantity. So the initial renewal was 16.8%, or about $1 million annually. We saw the largest increase in your stop loss because of the number of large claims you've had on both the HMO and PPO. We did go back, we were granted rate relief, and we got about a percent and a half on the admin fee and about 10% on the stop loss. So the revised renewal, if you stay with your 100,000, you currently have 100,000 stop loss level, that means the Village pays the first $100,000 on an individual claim, then the reinsurance kicks in, would be reduced to just under 14%. That is still a big increase, we get it. It's about $825,000 annually. Blue Cross did agree to a wellness credit of $40,000 that you can use to whatever initiative the Village has, or with our wellness team, maybe develop some things with that. So we thought we'd look at an option for $125,000 stop loss. So what that means is you're currently paying the first 100, you would now pay 125. But we don't do that lightly, because even though there's savings on the fixed cost savings for the stop loss, we have to make sure that it's still good for you, that you're not paying that savings out, like a break-even point in claims. So we were able to get the renewal with 125K stop loss down to about 10.7%, and the increase is about 651,000. So we looked at what it looked like for the Village to pay that 25,000 more. The combined net savings over the initial renewal with this stop loss is about 375,000. Over the revised renewal, it's about 173,000. What we see, the PPO savings moving to 125,000 is the 246,000. You'll pay $246,000 less in 2026 for your stop loss at 125,000 than you are at 100. HMO savings, the same thing, we don't see as big a savings. You also don't have a very large HMO enrollment, but it's still 68,000. So to the right, you'll see that on the HMO, we would have spent, it would have been two claimants up to that 25,000. On the PPO, you would have spent about $88,000, I believe that says. We wanted to look back because just this point in time isn't good, let's look back. What did you do last year? Let's pretend at 2024, that you had $125,000 stop loss with these savings. So you can see for the HMO, you would have had one claimant, you would have paid an extra 25,000 on, and on the PPO, you would have paid an additional 105. So you still win a warranted savings. We tried to look at 150,000. Based on your size, Blue Cross doesn't always want to work with us, and quite honestly, 150,000 for a group your size is a little high, but we just wanted to apply that same savings to see what that looked. One additional thing that they got back to us on Friday on is we have a division called MMA RX Solutions. What they do is they take your contract, and they actually do a deep dive into the rebates Blue Cross is giving, into the fees, the dispensing fees they're charging, into the ingredient fees. They are very confident that they have $80,000 additional savings on your pharmacy contract. So that's something that we can look into, and they've been very successful at negotiating our contracts for a lot of the municipalities and villages, and finding savings. These are the renewal fees broken down. I don't know if you want to look at it, it's really wordy, but we also have a spreadsheet on the next page, but this is how it basically played out. Your PPO and HDHP are on top, that's where we started with the 16.4%, and you can see the fees by line item. Some people like to read it rather than look at spreadsheets. These same numbers are on the next slide. The HMO was at about 18%. Your HMO is running very hot this year, there's a lot of claim activity on it. So now we're going to test if you're on the vision plan. This is very small. So what we're showing you is the, your current cost is the first two columns from the left. PPO is the first column, HMO is the second column. What we're trying to draw your attention to is that bottom box in red. So you can see the combined cost at the bottom, and I'm going to have to put on my glasses because I don't even think I can read this from here, is your current cost is about $6 million. If you go to the next column, that was the initial renewal, and that renewal took the combined increase up to 7.1 million. The next column is the final renewal they gave us with your stop loss at $100,000, still an incre- Still an increase, but it's about 6.9 million. And then the far, the two columns to the far right with the PPO and the HMO, and combined, we are at just about 6.7 million dollars. So there is still a large increase over your current plan. So what we wanted to do is break it down this way so you can actually see the total cost. So we have the 2024, sorry, 2025. We have the initial renewal. We have the final renewal. And then we have the final renewal with $125,000 stop loss. And you can see the revised renewal, if you stay as you are, don't make any plan changes, keep your 100,000. We're saving 200,000 over where we started. For the $125,000 stop loss, it's 375. One of the things to keep in mind when we're looking at that increase for the 125,000 at the end, Blue Cross does raise your claim, your expected claim cost a little bit because they assume you're going to be taking on more of that claim responsibility, right, from the 100 to the 125. But claims are variable. So that's why we look at the fixed cost. Your claims may not. You might lose some of your large claim activity next year, which means you have a lot of savings and you're not paying it out in claims. But we don't know that. We don't have a crystal ball. And as we know, there are a lot of things coming down the pipeline. I think Dave would agree. Treatments and pharmacy specifically are really starting to run a higher cost. Reasons to stay standalone, you are the captain of your own ship. You make all the calls. Your runout is taken care of. You have stop loss protection on runout. It will be 12 months, just like it is for IPBC, but you also have stop loss protection on that. So that should you incur, let's say in November or December, an extremely large claim, and it doesn't come payable until the following year when you terminate the contract, you still have stop loss insurance. They'll pick that up. If you don't have that insurance, that protection when it, on runout, you, if it was an extremely large claim, let's say some of your claims are $300,000, $400,000, you would pay the bulk of it. So it's just something to consider. The pool, absolutely. I like to think of it as Costco, Sam's. We're shopping in bulk. Or you can stay standalone and make your own judgment calls on renewals carriers, anything that you want to do. You will not have disruption. You'll have the same vision providers. You'll have the same dental providers as you do today. So you're not going to see anything regarding George and then Regina. We are her team. I am part of the team. So you will see me out here. And we also have account managers behind us to help with open enrollment, benefit summaries, anything that we need. We also have obviously compliance, which Regina is on, or anybody in the village can be invited to as well. We do webinars, seminars, bulletins, keeping her informed. There's been some changes actually this year. And then open enrollment. And we are ready to do open enrollment onsite varying times. We're used to police departments. We're used to fire department shifts. Whether it's recorded, we do like to record one so that everybody gets the same message, including new hires, because it changes. Things change. So we do paper. We do flip books, online, whatever the village is most comfortable with. So I don't have the renewal decisions. Obviously, your life and disability, if you're going to stay standalone, renew with Dearborn, you're not getting a rate increase. You've got a three-year rate guarantee, no disruption on the vision. Life and disability, there's not really disruption. Sometimes you can have some service issues. Dental, renew with Blue Cross. And then the medical, we would suggest doing the 125 stop loss. Just because we saw last year what you would have paid out in claims, you still had savings, what you've paid out so far in claims this year. And then when you move to a cooperative, and we do cooperatives as well, obviously not as large. You just want to make sure that you understand the reserve, which Dave touched on a little bit, about if it's a shortfall and you're going to pull out, if you have stop loss for the claims that might come due after the contract is terminated. And how is your reserve handled? If it's just like it is now and your claims continue high, I know you'll pay the 50,000 instead of the 100 or 125. But then there's that second layer you share from the 50 to 150. And I'm not speaking to it. I'm not plus, plus or minus it because I don't understand it. I don't have enough knowledge on it. But those are some things that we would look for. And I think that's it. And the rest would be open enrollment. So if you have any questions, probably not as many for me because you are with Blue Cross. Pluses and minuses to both, definitely.
Do any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Justice Getzinas?
I just had a couple of questions. So Horton, or your company bought Horton, so all of Horton's clients went to the new?
Yes. So they followed Horton. And actually, we work with the Horton team. We're actually trying to combine the team into one big municipal team. But when they first came on board, they were moving some things around. So yes, we are working with a lot of the Horton people currently.
Okay, and you'll be head, okay, and you'll be still headquartered in Orland? I mean, not your, I mean Horton was, but you'll still keep that location?
They're keeping their office, and then we have one in Chicago and one in Schafer.
Okay. I believe, if I recall correctly, our contract, we worked on it last time. I believe it was in the summer, early fall of 2021. And I thought it was a five-year contract. Was that correct? Is it a four or five year? I thought it was, George. I thought it was a five year?
It's expiring. It runs through next year.
Yeah, 2026.
Yeah.
Okay. What else do I, and do you have, you said you have access to pools, although not as large. Would you have access to their pool? Or no, you have separate?
To IPBC's pool? No, we do not. That's theirs. That's their own. And then we have several. We have two library pools, a school district pool, and a small municipal pool. And so we could look at the village going in at another time. It didn't work out this year. But it's much smaller, much smaller. There's nine municipalities. And the reason is they, some of them actually came out of IPBC. They don't want to be that big. They want autonomy. And every member gets a seat at the board so that they, right now, they have, there's nine members. There's a nine-member board. There's nine municipalities in it. And that's how they want it. They want to contain their growth. We don't, we're not allowed to solicit. So it's up to the board on accepting members. I will say, most of them are out this way. They're your neighbors. So they want to make sure that it's somebody they can work with.
And do you see the same cost savings maybe not on the same scale though in a pool?
We see, yes, we do, because that's where we're getting our fixed, it's the fixed cost. You know, the claims are going to be the claims. There's an old saying. But as you pool together, you can buy stop loss, and it's a little administration. You can go out to market to carve out your stop loss or carve out your pharmacy. But it's, so far, it's worked well. It's relatively new. It's in infancy stages compared to IPBC. We've had it since 2018.
And another thing is Horton was always very lean with us on administration fees. You know, they're the biggest employer in Orland Park, private industry. And you said there will be no change in that? Because if I remember correctly, I thought it was about 70 or 75,000?
No, it was 40.
40, I'm doing both plans. So at about 40 for an admin fee?
For, yes, for the, for the fee for doing the benefits.
Okay. And that's been pretty consistent?
Correct. And for a group your size, for what we see, that is pretty much market, probably 40 to 60,000 dollars.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Other questions?
How was that? I'm trying to give you back some time.
I'll delve even more. Give it a second. Any comments or other questions from the board?
To kind of piggyback on what Mary Ann said about our pool. We have nine members in our pool. They want to grow slowly. We've entertained a couple in the past, but they just weren't the right fit for the group. So we don't, you know, their thought process is we don't want to be this huge conglomerate where service is going to get lost in that because it can. So they really want to just grow slowly and methodically. So that's why we have nine members right now.
They didn't want us this year because of our claims, correct?
Yes, it increased costs. We have to protect the pool as well.
No, I get it.
It increased, it increased the cost for the co-op.
All about risk mitigation and risk spreading. Welcome to the insurance industry. Any other questions? Mr. Chairman? Justice Maloney?
Just a quick comment. Thank you to both of you for providing a thorough presentation on this. I think the first time we saw the pool stuff, we were missing some pieces. This painted a, a, a good picture of it. And, you know, appreciate the detail that you guys present as well every year. So thank you very much. Helps us make our decision.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor? I wonder if staff has any additional insight that they're able to provide to us? Questions that we didn't know enough to ask and that are important for us to understand, George or Regina?
I think the questions that have been asked have been incredible. They've been very, really, really thoughtful, really in depth. So I guess, I think this, I think the board is probably been more attuned to the type of issues that something like this could result from than many other boards. So, no, I think you've asked everything.
Regina, you're a little bit an expert in this area?
I concur. I think both presentations from IPBC and Marsh McLennan were very thorough. I believe that the questions that were asked by the officials were very intuitive and inquisitive. And I think their responses respond, were responsive to what was asked.
So are you saying, George and Regina, that there's probably nothing else important that might help us to fully understand the vote we're about to take?
Yeah, I think you got all the information at this point where you can deliberate.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be recognized? So just a, a couple of questions on the fees. I think earlier it was expressed as a percentage. Just a moment ago, it was expressed as a specific dollar amount. And if I heard you right, you said the $40,000 that we've been previously paying Horton is effectively market rates for a municipality our size?
We are, you know, I will, I mean, honestly, you usually find public sectors lower than the private market. And I would say 40 to 60,000 is probably industry average.
About right for? Industry average. So nothing special?
Yeah.
For public sector? Okay. And then do we broadly agree that the fundamental problem here that we face as a board is, let's just assume that the saving, it sounds like we all agree. You found some savings by trying to optimize the contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield. But at its core, we're self-insured, we're less than 300 people, and we've had a run of bad claims. So on paper, to an actuary, whatever firm on planet Earth, we basically look like not a great risk right now, hence the way this got priced. Either through Blue Cross Blue Shield, same provider. The reality is, at 300 people, right, or 300 lives, whatever the phrase is in, in actuarial science, that's our fundamental challenge. So either join a pool or we pay the extra 500 grand to retain some hundred, some level of independence. That's the essential question, correct?
For this year. And hope for, hope for better claim experience next year.
It's not an easy decision, but 500 grand is 500 grand. That's, that's what we're staring at. Any other questions from the board? I have a few questions for staff.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question for staff. Do you see any issues with our current labor agreements that we have with employees with the transition? Is there anything that we should be concerned about?
No, the plans are pretty much apples to apples. As long as we provide the same or similar as to what's written in the agreement, there shouldn't be any grievances to that.
And given that our contract doesn't expire, if there was a change, when would that change take place? And what does that do to the contract that was already in place with MMR?
MMA?
MMR.
Oh, yeah. Our standard template agreement has a 30-day opt-out. But it's important to note that, as they mentioned, they're also working, they're the sole broker working on our property casualty renewal. And that will be coming at a future meeting. That we do have to, we will continue to work with MMA on that. So whatever, what will happen is we will amend down the contract if we move to IPBC.
How does it work? I guess I should ask them this. You know, when we had a claim, it's good, like you said, for 12 months. So that claim would stay with the old insurer? And, or it would stay with us? And then how do we show them on the budget? Because we might have a cost savings the first year because those prior claims go with the former company or go with us.
So you're saying if we, if we transferred from MMA to IPBC?
Correct.
And that's, that's because of our stop loss coverage. Is that right, Mary Ann?
But do you typically see savings in the first year as a result of that or not so much? Yeah, you, you can answer. I'm sorry. Sorry, didn't mean to point at you.
If I can go back, excuse me.
Please re-identify yourself for the recording.
Yes, Dave Cook, IPBC Executive Director. Going back to your question, in either case, government accounting, county standards board principles, you have to show your, your medical insurance on an accrual basis, which means it picks up the incurred but not reported. So that is our, that has already been added to your books. So hopefully your runout is less than your IBNR, and you'll have it. In our case, coming into the pool, we will add that to your, to your, to the expense that you're in to show that that, that additional runout expense has been recognized and added to the books. So it's, it's the way accounting principles require to be, to be handled. So it's fair across the board.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this for either party? George, so my question for you on clarification is, we still have, and if we switch tonight on healthcare, we're still working with MMA?
Correct, for the property casualty insurance. Liability, trips and falls, covering our building, all of that.
Okay, I mean, one more time, any other questions, clarifications, comments?
I just had a question. I noticed on their presentation that we have the same attorney that you have. I mean, do you see that as a conflict if we had any concern with service or, you know? Is there any conflict with you representing the co-op and also representing the village? If we have a potential legal disagreement, like whose side are you going to be on?
If I could, we have 13, we have 13 agreements now with legal user agreements. And obviously, if there was a disagreement between the village and IPBC, we can use one of those other.
So the village attorney would not be used to, to do that, correct?
We can use, we can use them. We can not use them. We could, we have multiple options, but as far as a conflict?
And that's in a case-by-case instance where we would evaluate and determine whether or not a conflict of interest actually exists. If there's just the appearance of one, you know, and we would consult the, the board, consult the village about it before we took any, any steps.
So if you saw something that has, had the potential, you probably would back away?
Of course.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Justice Healey?
If we change tonight, what would the, what would, it would effectively October 1st, but for all basic purposes?
No, it would be January 1st.
January 1st. Okay, thank you. And there's no way to compare, if, looking back, if we had made the right decision because we'll, we won't have the same information, you know, compared to each other, I guess. If we, if we went with the IP, with the new place, we won't have the same basis of losses to see if we, or the rates or whatever. Would we be able to compare on the same basis one year to the next? If we had, did we make a good decision?
Oh, in the future?
Right.
Oh, okay. I think, you know, we'll have to kind of see, as Dave mentioned.
George, when you say March, you mean by March, we'll know how we closed out 25 in terms of claims, correct?
By March, Dave, could you just, when does, when do the next rates get established?
Normally, once you're in the pool, you would get your rate increases in March. The first year is a little bit different because we won't have all the claim data. So normally, what happens the first year is you get the IPBC average. But we'll look at it to make sure it's, convince you with your claim activity. And the question you raised, you know, I mean, on either side of the coin, your claims are your claims, and they're going to be the same. The difference is, the only difference in how your claims are treated is how we allocate them. You know, we're going to give you a lower stop point, stop-loss point.
Yep. Well, it's a difficult, it's a, yeah, it's a, you guys are, both people have presented some great, you know, I think we've done a great job looking at the, you know, what it means for both sides. So thank you both.
Comments or questions? George, do you have any thoughts you want to add to this?
No, if we do go with IPBC, I did mention, you know, I've been in an organization where I, that I went through the transition. It was seamless. So that is obviously, if we do proceed, that's something that we have to make sure that the transition is, in fact, seamless. And so there's going to be robust communication that would occur, and we would just continue dialogue with IPBC and all of our employees. And we would start that process immediately.
And then finally, just recognizing what was just said from both firms about when the actual rates become for this year. We're voting, if, if we go with IPBC, that $476,000 is a real savings.
Correct.
Going into '27, we don't know what our claim history is going to be. We don't know what the market's going to be. That's the inherent volatility in buying insurance for 300 employees, correct?
That's correct.
So that factor doesn't change.
That's correct.
How long are we committed to either one, either firm for insurance? Are we going to do this potentially every year?
I don't know if, it's, you know, I don't know. It's really going to be up to the board whether we're going to, I think we're going to want to try to give this, try to run it out a little bit to see how everything moves with IPBC.
If we go with them, right?
If we go with them, yeah. But, and, you know, we'll just, you know, we have a lot of flexibility because these are, both are only one-year agreements.
By definition, they're only one-year agreements.
Yeah.
So it's not a great idea to do organizational churn, but if there's another co-op out there that we could join, and they're priced better than IPBC, et cetera, we could look at that in the future.
That is, the board's prerogative, absolutely.
Well, I think all my questions have been answered.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
George, real quick, so assuming, you know, next year, we did have another bad year of claim, you know, claims, it's reasonable to believe that if we went with Marsh McLennan, our, again, our rates would go up again, could significantly go up. But because if we're going with IPBC, which we're in a pool, chances are, we're not going to go up as high, correct?
So, and I think both parties already kind of mentioned it. Our claims are going to be our claims, no matter who we're with. It's really, it's just a matter of those other costs that are involved with it. And so, and I think Dave mentioned this, because of the buying power, they're consistently 4% less than, you know, the commercial market. That is, that's just going to be the fact, because if we're in IPBC or if we're in MMA, those claims are going to be the same.
It's how the risk is priced?
Yeah.
By Blue Cross and the actuaries?
Yes.
That's the question I was looking for.
Comments or questions?
What's that?
Any other comments or questions from the board?
That was...
All right, there's been two motions proposed. We'll need to pick a motion and move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leafblad?
I recommend the village board approve an ordinance to move the employee insurance benefit program from a standalone plan to participate in the intergovernmental personnel benefit cooperative IPBC effective January 1st, 2020. It says 2025 on here, but I think it should be 2026.
That's correct.
Okay, so I propose an amendment, and I'm proceeding with this motion as amended, January 1st, 2026. Also to recommend the approval of the employee medical annual premium in the amount of $6,406,63. Is that year correct, 2025 there?
Yeah, because that last number is what we're paying in 2025.
Lastly, to recommend the employees' ancillary spend for dental, vision, and life administration in the amount of $413,562, which is a 4.9% increase on dental, an 8.4% decrease on vision, and a 40.2% decrease on core life and AD&amp;D, with the village pursuing disability administration from a standalone carrier in the approximate amount of $40,000. And optional health benefit navigation program in the program in the amount of $50,000, adjusting employee contribution equivalents to increase the premium costs effective January 1st, 2026, and authorize the village manager to execute said agreements subject to village attorney review.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions on this motion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted clarification, please. The standalone carrier in the amount of 40, and then there seems to be another cost of 50. So is that part of the $95,000 you were talking about for your administration fee?
No, the standalone carrier is for, the village is unique in that it has a short-term disability program in addition to the pension programs. So it's the same thing. We have to, we pay the premium. So this is just to manage that program.
Okay, is this something they don't offer in their package, or have we always paid it?
We've always paid it.
So we always paid it outside of Horton or...
Well, it was always negotiated, Horton negotiated it for us.
But that's standard. We've paid it outside the premium, so to speak.
Yeah, so currently, this year is Dearborn, correct?
Yeah.
I think that the rest of my motion, I don't know that I said, "and authorize the village manager to act..."
You did.
I did, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village business.
We have one person who signed in. Mr. Weaver?
Brian Weaver, I will be quick as usual. So I wanted to say that I was in favor of at least the BP AMCO getting eminent domain because that property used to have a deed restriction, typically gas stations and things like that. 7-Elevens were well-known for that for years. That deed restriction had been around since 2009 at least. When the sovereign, which would be the village, takes over that property, that extinguishes the deed restriction, which opens it up to have another gas station or another convenience store, whatever you want. But right now, we would ban it if the seller went to somebody private. So it's kind of hard to get rid of a property like that. The only other thing to consider is, I don't understand what's going on with the UST underneath, you know, underground storage tanks last 25, 30 years. I don't know what the problem was with this BP. I used to go there myself. I used to go get chicken around the corner myself. Part of the problem with that is, it's really expensive to pull that out. I didn't see a no further remediation letter tied to the PIN. So I don't know what the status is underground. And we're not going to know that for a while. But I used to do condemnation appraisals years and years ago, myself, and I'm savings alone, and I did many condemnations and things, so I'm familiar with this. The two gentlemen that were here, and I did talk to them before they left, as far as what their lease thing was about, I said to check their own lease for the condemnation clause between them and the landlord. If they didn't have it, then they'd be subject to the village or the state laws. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. We have no further items, correct?
Nope.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, we need a voice.
Do you want me to call the roll?
I thought we could end this quickly. Call the roll, please.
I was like, I'm not going to...
Old habit, my apologies. We're testing the lawyer.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leafblad?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.